Welcome to the September 7, 2023, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board, and we will now start our meeting with a roll call with the members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Aray.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren. And Ms. Wolfson. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the least all, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Board members, we've been having quite a lot of problems with our microphones. It's great for the people that are in the room, but the people that are watching us virtually, if the computer, if the microphone is not on, they cannot hear anything we say, and I know I've been guilty of that myself. But also, when you're not speaking, be sure you turn it off. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes, Madam Chair, but we did receive one additional piece of written testimony on the PAI policy manuals, and that has been printed and is with your materials.
Okay, the one from Mr. Rosenblatt?
Yes.
Thank you very much. In the August 31, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the July 20 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any questions or changes? If not, may I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a presentation by Mr. David Birkentholz. I knew that. From the Department of Planning on the introduction of the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines. After Mr. Birkentholz has finished his introduction, I will call for a motion to set a public hearing on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Birkentholz.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the gathered members of the Planning Board. My name is David Birkentholz. For those who haven't met me, I'm the Eastern Sector Lead with Community Planning, and we're going to be introducing the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines tonight. So we want to go to the next slide. So these are new design guidelines, not any, we're not amending anything. They'll be incorporated into the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies, which is used by the county to help steer commercial and residential development within the goals of the master plan. Council Resolution 223 passed by council on February 21, 2023, authorized creation of the new guidelines, and allowed the Essex Middle River Civic Council to lead that effort. As we mentioned, we're asking for a public hearing to be scheduled on September 21, 2023. Perfect. So I want to run quickly through the timeline of how these arrived with you today. So EMRCC has been meeting with community organizations and similar groups of stakeholders over the last few years. They've been informing folks of what design guidelines are and why they might be a good idea for Middle River. EMRCC then worked with Design Collective to prepare the initial drafts of the GMR Design Guidelines, and then share those out with the same community organizations, who reviewed the drafts, had the opportunity to ask questions to both EMRCC and Design Collective. Those, that draft was received by Planning, and then we reviewed and asked questions back in December, January. We met with them, had a conversation with a number of our staff members, Design Collective staff, and then members of EMRCC. In February, on Council Resolution 223 passed, allowing EMRCC to develop those guidelines, and then in April, Planning Department received those again, which were reviewed, asked for changes, and had a more in-depth set of questions and concerns that we then sent back to EMRCC this August, and we received that updated document, which is before you today, early in August, or I'm sorry, late in August. So if I want to go to the next slide. There are two main goals for these guideline, design guidelines, to encourage consistent, high-quality design. The guidelines were for, well, the guidelines reflect a professional expertise and current best practices for achieving high-quality design for single-family and multifamily residences. And then also importantly, they reflect the unique characteristics and precedents of the Greater Middle River area. This is a historic community with recent developments that reflect the waterfront and industrial nature of the community, and they're looking to continue that. Let me go to the last slide. There are five main sections of these design guidelines. The first is site design, which describes our buildings, streets, and open spaces interface to create the public character of the public realm, including building orientations, frontages, and setbacks. The second is street design, which will guide the design and character of all streets and alleys intended to comprise a complete street style design. Third, architectural design, which will guide the appearance, meaning the materials, configurations, and techniques used for all relevant buildings. Fourth is landscape design, which is the character of open spaces in the public and then private residential parcels. And then finally, signage design, which is a well-designed coordinated, sorry, which will create criteria aimed at achieving a well-designed and coordinated signage throughout the entire Greater Middle River area. So thank you, everyone, that's the introduction. As I mentioned, our next step is to schedule a public hearing on the 21st. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hafer?
Thank you for your. Okay. Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate your willingness to help us better understand this project. I have a few questions and an information request.
I'll do my best, thank you.
Oh, and of course, if you need more time to gather the more comprehensive response, that's, the next meeting would be fine. Have these proposed standards been reviewed by appropriate fair housing advocates, stakeholders to ascertain the impact of these proposed standards on the construction of affordable workforce housing in the geographic area?
So the review of the design guidelines that you see today were only done by Planning and the Office of Zoning, who returned a comment that basically said zoning regulations override design guidelines. So those are the two types of review that was received.
Okay, so no one, no one has yet to put these in front of housing advocates?
My knowledge, no.
Okay. So my second question, just for the record, because I already knew the answer. Have the proposed standards been reviewed by fair housing advocates to assess the disproportionate impacts of these proposed standards on working-class families, many of whom are families of color in Baltimore County, and their ability to afford new homes or their ability to buy and improve existing homes in the affected community?
The Department of Planning hasn't managed that, but if the community members did reach out to that at the public hearing, they'll be happy to provide that information.
Okay. Have these design standards been reviewed by homebuilder stakeholders slash developers for their input?
Again, if the community members have brought that, I'm sure they'll bring that up.
Okay, just for the record, is there an estimate of how much additional cost will be added to an average new housing unit to build a unit that complies with these proposed standards? For instance, 5% more, 10% more?
Not to my knowledge.
All right. Given the housing, current housing shortages and exorbitant prices of new and existing housing stock, it seems to me that we should be exploring ways to make housing more affordable, not less affordable. I'd like to turn now to a few real-world examples of what I think is the impact of these proposed standards on an owner of an existing home in the affected area to make sure I understand this correctly, okay? So 1.2, under purpose, it says the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines serve as a guide for all new development, as well as major renovations, i.e. renovations that alter the building facade and/or over 50% of the existing primary structure within the Greater Middle River area, with additional specific criteria for single- and multifamily residential and hotel buildings, as well as your associated site improvements. So first, as I read this, these standards potentially impact all homeowners of existing homes within the affected area. Am I reading that correctly?
For major renovations.
Right, or, or changes to building facade?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to check these two scenarios. So if I have elderly parents who can't afford to live anywhere else, and we decide to create a multi-generational environment, and someone has mobility impairments, and we have to remodel the house more than 50%, or just simply make an improvement, say adding a ramp to the front of the home or widening the door of the front of the home, the homeowner would be subject to these design standards and potentially incur additional costs to comply?
I think I'll have to review whether that's the case and bring that back to you.
Okay. Scenario number two is just if I want to simply change the style of my windows or shutters or front door on an existing home, since it's impacting the facade, I'd be subject to these design standards and potentially incur additional costs to comply?
Again, I think I'll have to review and bring that back to you.
Okay, so in effect, to me, it sounds like these proposed design standards are de facto HOA standards that are being imposed on individual homeowners in the affected area. And it's, I find it, I'm incredulous that community groups, if they really understand this, support this. So that leads to my information request, because you indicated that there had been outreach, some, some amount of outreach. So I'd like to ask, in addition to written responses to my previously asked questions, I'd like to request the following information. Please provide the board with a list of all community groups contacted, a list of attendees, their positions within the community associations, and the date and duration of the briefing. Please provide the board with a copy of the minutes from each of these briefings, and please provide the board a copy of the briefing materials that were used for each of these briefings, and be sure to highlight the specific real-world examples that were used to demonstrate the impact of these design standards on individual homeowners, as well as projected costs of compliance to each homeowner for each scenario. That's the end of my questions. Thanks again for your presentation and willingness to entertain the questions, and I yield to the Chair.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may. Mr. Hafer, could you provide, since it appeared that you were reading from some document, if you could share that with us, please, so we can share that as well with the Essex Middle River Community Council, who brought these design guidelines to us?
There's a project out in Ricehurst Town that I was involved with or saw, and very well-designed, I believe, product. It just finished up the development recently, Clinton Muse. But because of pushing design and cost, and the houses ended up being not a reasonable price for the county affordable housing, if you want, they were more concerned about the back of the houses, which were to be aluminum beside it, looked like the front, which had a lot of gingerbread on it. And it pushed the prices up very substantially. So I think I agree with Chris a lot, that, you know, trying to make it look better, and I've talked before about Todd's house that was built 20 years ago, 25 years ago. They're worn now, no question. I sold townhouses on Milfordville Road in 1975. I drive into developments, it doesn't, it doesn't look very nice. Some of the marine exterior gray plywood. So I appreciate the need for it, but the question of cost is really important. You also have so many of our communities from the 80s on. Prior to that, you know, Dundalk, Middle River, older areas, not so much. But you have homeowners' associations that are supposed to be doing that. I lived in a condominium, single-family development for 28 years, and before I could paint the front door purple, I had to get, you know, I didn't paint it, but I'm saying if I wanted to, you had to get permission of that association, that group of homeowners. I just am concerned also the bureaucratic needs that will be necessary to get these kind of things approved, meaning somebody that just wants to redo the front of their house, they have to come into the permit department, now they got to come to Planning to make sure Planning's approved it. I think it's really overkill, I really do. I think it's going to become very tedious to be able to renovate a house. And what we're seeing, of course, in Baltimore City is huge amounts of renovation taking place. And I do believe our county, which has become an older county, if you look to when we really started developing, you know, the Dundalk and the, and the Middle River and the Bethlehem Steel, and that's when we started, was in the 20s and 30s. So we're over 100 years old, so there will be a lot of housing to be renovated, and I just don't want to see everybody have to wait. They're waiting five months for permits now on new construction that does have its plan book, that does have its approvals done. What are you going to have to wait to get a rehab kind of, you know, project done as well?
Ms. Brophy, you had a question?
No.
See what we're missing?
Mr. Warren?
Yeah, I, thank you, Chris, because it's something that, I was going to jump in first, but you were much more elegant than me, as always. I would just add to what he says. I really want you to focus on the impact on the cost of housing. What, what's the nominal increase in the cost of a townhome? What's the nominal increase cost in a single-family home that this is going to drive? So if you could emphasize that, and again, thank you, Chris and Howard, for your comments.
Mr. Halipka?
Have, has the county ever implemented a, a plan with this kind of restrictions over such a broad area before? I mean, it's just, I'm just trying to get a sense of how does this compare to other community plans that we've done?
In terms of design guidelines, I'm not familiar.
In terms of the design guidelines, the, the implication that, as Chris and Todd and Howard have talked about, I mean, is that something we've, we've imposed elsewhere? Or is this sort of new that we're trying out in Middle River?
In terms of design guidelines, I don't think we've hit anything with a size this large. Generally, my understanding of design guidelines, and I might not be the best person from Planning to answer this, as I mentioned, use of the CMVP is generally with a Gen UG's team in the development review, but it's for more targeted areas as where design guidelines have been approved. As I mentioned, I'm the Eastern Sector Planner, I know we have them, and for instance, the Hunt Valley Town Center is a good example of one side use in the past. So that's not, if not one parcel, one general development that I'm aware of.
And, and Chair, if I, if I, if I, if I may, these are not the county's guidelines. These were brought to us by the Essex Middle River Community Council by, after a resolution from Councilman Marks asking the Planning Board to review the guidelines for approval. So what we have done is reviewed the guidelines, offered our best professional judgment, met with their representatives as well as with their consultant, and presenting to you the guidelines as modified based upon some of the comments we made. These are not our guidelines. We are not, you know, we're presenting them to you. It's really going to be the advocates on behalf of Essex Middle River Community Council at the public hearing and thereafter to demonstrate, I think, or more specifically articulate the responses to the various questions. Helpful dialogue right now, because you're expressing what your concerns are, and hopefully you'll restate the same to, to the people who present it, and hopefully in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Are there any questions from anybody over here first? None? Okay, then, Mr. Perlow, again?
Is there a map that shows this Middle River area that this is under?
Yes, can we go back to the presentation?
I didn't think I saw it, but that's first question. The second is to, for Scott, I thought we did something over on the west side of town, like the Tapsico or something, maybe, in the last six months, where we approved a guideline book for somebody?
I'm just assuming that this is a rather large area, and I just don't recall us doing something.
Nobody else remembers that? I really thought that something like, not Lansdowne, but Lansdowne.
Nothing residential.
Well, if there's no other questions.
No, it should be right there.
One with the initial slide, yeah.
Okay. So the far side would be 95 there, and then?
Is this plan to be done all over the county? Is that what the Planning Department expects to do?
We don't have a role. Our, our role was to review and present this to the Planning Board for incorporation in the CMVP, Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies. We are not going to be involved in the review of specific projects in this area should these guidelines be adopted.
My question was, are we planning to do it in other sections of the county? Is it somewhere?
Well, as I indicated, these are not our guidelines. We're not, these are coming from the community after resolution from the Councilmen. So these, it is not our intent to develop similar guidelines for other parts of the county.
I saw the Councilman told their people to try to do it.
Mr. Perlow, I, I work with different business groups around Baltimore County, and a lot of them have said they've been involved in their community guidelines. So other areas are working all on a different level.
Quick question. So since this was obviously brought to the Planning Board by the association, who's, if this was to pass after the public hearing, I think, who's in charge of holding these, like, the community accountable to these guidelines?
Oh, the CMVP is enforced through the county's review of development. So anytime we get any project that would come through, we go to the CMVP, and that is brought to our comments. In my experience, that means that the enforcement mechanism is ALJ, that they would be presented this as, you know, these are including the guidelines, it's what the community has asked for. Then ALJ would be tasked with deciding whether or not to enforce those guidelines at that time, as they are with any, the rest of the CMVP.
Okay, but this is, I guess the CMVP obviously overarches over these guidelines, correct?
Yeah, this would be incorporated, this would be like the next chapter.
Okay, thank you.
Are the guidelines enforceable by code enforcement?
No.
So if they have to go through permits, you know, there must be some regulation regarding these requirements for this facade. Is that correct?
Could you rephrase the question?
I mean, they're guidelines, you know, as, as Chris, Mr. Hafer suggested, you know, they, now they've got this permitting process, so permit has to review that they meet the guidelines. So if they don't meet the guidelines, they can't do the improvements or change the facade?
So these would be for any development that comes through. In my experience with the Department of Planning, I'm admittedly unfamiliar how that works at other departments, if they would also reference these guidelines, but in my experience, they haven't done that. This is to shape the, the way in which the Department of Planning reviews development and the comments we decide, which, as I mentioned, generally goes ALJ if there is an issue and if we don't believe that they are adhering to these. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Birkentholz, we greatly appreciate your time here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry. Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll call for a motion.
Be it moved that a public hearing be set for Thursday, September 21, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. regarding the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As a reminder, the public hearing will be in person on September 21. The Board tentatively scheduled to vote on that matter immediately following the public hearing. Next on the agenda, we have an opportunity to further discuss and then vote on Cycle 41, Water Supply and Sewage Master Plan Amendments. This item was first introduced to the Board on June 15, and a public hearing was conducted on July 20. Staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here to answer any questions that the Board may have as we discuss and before we vote. Would Ms. Jeanette Applazo from the Department of Public Works and Transportation like to make any comments at this time? Okay. Board members, are there any outstanding questions that you might have? Well, then I'll open the, Mr. Warren?
I just want to know what we're voting on. So if somebody could tell me exactly what, what the?
Well, I sent you an email today. Okay, and then it's on your sheet. Okay, so what would you like to explain?
What are the, do you all want to decide? Do you have an idea what the site looks like? But, you know, what exactly are, you know, we approved last time. Have public water and sewer to the site, and that, is that what, what we're going to?
There's, there's, there's one there that says exactly that. Yes, there is one that says. I don't know what to say, because.
Madam Chair, you may want to entertain a motion, and then that becomes the basis for the, for the discussion, whether people are for or against.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. All right, anyone else that had an, had an opportunity to go over this today? Would you like to have a motion? To accept either A, B, or C, or come up with something that you feel more comfortable with?
I'll make it first.
Oh, I have a question. What did we approve, what did we approve last year? What was, was it, was it A, B, C? Was it a combo of the three? Was it, or it would be a three combo of A or C, because B is against it? Would you have exactly what we voted on last year? Did we approve that correct?
Yes, I think the recommend, I do not believe, and Ms. Applazo may remember, I don't believe that the recommendation was the same, was presented in the same way at last year. I think there's differences in the way that EPS and DPWT presented it. So, thank you, Taylor. So last year, the recommendation was to change from W7 and S7 to W1S1, which has been requested this year, that would apply to parcel 155, parcel 154, between parcels 155 and 141, and parcel 141. Also, W3S3 on parcel 154 above 155, parcel 140. And within, within the ERTL adjustment was, excuse me, with the ERTL adjustment deferred at the time, because they had requested an ERTL change, and that was not part of this year's request. So it's very specific parcel. Which, which does look pretty much like the C, Public Works and Transportation. Maybe, actually, I think it is identical.
Yeah.
I think it's identical to Public Works' recommendation of this year.
Okay, does everybody clearly understand that? If so, would someone like to make a motion?
We're in the motion that we approved Cycle 41 and Paragraph C for the waters, whereas the.
Okay, then what we're going to have to do is, if you're making that recommendation, then we have to do a roll call, if everybody agrees with that.
Need a second.
See what Public Works has recommended to us.
You want me to re, fully restate it so that we have it in?
Yes.
You have to read like the whole thing.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendations and reports for the Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment, Cycle 41, Reference Number 23-01, and recommends the following. W1S1 on parcel 155 and parcel 154, between parcel 155 and 141, and parcel 141. W3S3 on, and parcel 140, Part 1, and parcel 140, Part 2.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Oh.
Want to go?
Yeah, questions?
Wouldn't it make sense to combine A and C? Because if there is going to be redevelopment of the property, we want them to be able to comply, we want them to comply with the critical area requirements. Can we combine?
Do we already have a motion on the floor?
We would accept an amendment to take them to five.
Okay. Then you need to read it and combine them.
No, I think we need to vote on this one. Yeah. As amended? So, okay.
I guess we have to vote on the amendment.
First, vote on the amendment. Okay, so the new, so the amended motion would be, be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendation and reports for the Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment Cycle 41, Reference Number 23-01, and recommends the following. W1S1 on parcel 155 and parcel 154, between parcel 155 and parcel 141, and parcel 141. W3S3 on parcel 154 above parcel 155, parcel 140, Part 1, and parcel 140, Part 2. Approval of the requested change with the understanding that any redevelopment of the properties will be required to comply with all critical area requirements.
I'll second.
Madam Chair, I believe what this does is go beyond DPWT's recommendation and, and fully approves the request that was submitted by EPS, or recommended by EPS. So it's beyond the Public Works initial recommendation.
Does everybody clearly understand that, correct?
I second the motion. As amended, I should say.
Any questions, comments before we do a roll call?
So I'm not clear about what the status is of any negotiations between Baltimore County and the developers in terms of whether that property may be developed as a park, a public park. And if that hasn't been completed, if there's negotiations or discussions or whatever, because I really am unclear about it, if, if we approve this, aren't we giving the developer a leg up in terms of what the property is going to be worth if Baltimore County decides they have the funding to purchase it? And, and, and why are we in a hurry to do this? If there's negotiations, my understanding is there are negotiations ongoing, let's, let's try to keep the value of the property as affordable as possible for the county government to purchase it.
Oh, if that's legal.
That's not legal.
So what we do is we have a motion and a second.
Oh, just legality.
So now that we have a motion and a second, we need to take a roll call. So, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman's not here. Mr. Heinel?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Can I say Ms. Brophy?
Yep.
Just want to make sure. Got everybody in? Okay. Other business.
The eyes have it.
The eyes have it. Ms. Spensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 4723, Zoning Regulations, Uses permitted in the RC6 Zone, Group Childcare Centers for the purpose of permitting certain group childcare uses in the rural conservation and residential RC6 zone under certain conditions and generally relating to group childcare centers in the RC6 zone. And Resolution 20-23, Modify Designated Community of Arbutus as a Sustainable Community, a resolution of the Baltimore County Council to modify the designated community of Arbutus as a sustainable community pursuant to the attached Sustainable Community map. The modified area slash expansion request is 1,482.8 acres and is shown on the map marked as Exhibit A, and that was emailed over to you. And that concludes the report.
Running outside.
Off slow.
Yeah, that's right. This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for a public hearing on the Department Permits and Approval and Inspection Policy Manual update at 5:00. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.
Get an update on where we are with compensation. I just don't feel like I've gotten any information about it.
Did you get your email today? Yep.
Today, I was in meetings.
Okay. Then well, after the meeting, I'll fill you in on it. How's that, is that okay?
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Thanks for whoever fixed the sound system in here. I can hear every word, everyone saying it's a nice change. Thank you.
Well, if I may, since the, the room is used also by the Animal Control Board and also by the Liquor Board, four different agencies, sort of put our resources together to make sure that we could upgrade it. It is still not as fully functional as we want, but it should enable people to at least come in through a hybrid system now and actually hear everything going on, and hopefully record better for any listener who wants to then even call in to listen on further, for your meetings.
Now we can adjourn. Thank you all very much, and we'll be back here at 5:00, and I'm sure not, no one has any place to go in a rush right now.
I'm just trying to pull the timer.
Good evening, everyone again, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing on Updates to the PAI Policy Manual. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and we'll now start with a roll call of the members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array? Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Halipka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Perlow?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
At the July 20, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board, Ms. Sally Nash, the Director, the Deputy Director of the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections, introduced the PAI Policy Manual updates to the board. The updates are to the, the Development Management and the Plan Review Policy Manual and Zoning Policy Manual. Tonight, Ms. Nash and Mr. Peter Gutwold, PAI Director, are here to further present and update manuals to the, updated manuals to the board. Following their presentation, the board members will have a chance to ask questions, and then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak. Immediately following the public hearing, the board will reconvene for further discussion, and then we will vote on that matter. So please join me in welcoming Mr. Gutwold and Ms. Nash.
Good evening. Yes, it's been a few years. Seen some old faces from my old days of being the Department of Planning Director. So yes, we are here again today. Want to flip to the next, who's doing the, to discuss the updates to our development policy manuals, both Development Management and Plans Review. I think Ms. Nash explained to you that some of the effort was to update these things, but as in the first slide, it kind of just represented some of these things are over 30 years old, so any update is going to be a good update, because we're dealing with some very outdated methods and practices. Next slide. And so here are some of the project goals, as I was just mentioning. There's redundancies, there's inconsistencies with current practices and laws, there's outdated practices, if you will, some things that we've looked at and said, how are other jurisdictions doing this better? How are they doing it today? And things that we're not even using today that are actually outlined in the, in the policy manual. So this has been the concerted effort to try and clean all of that up and bring it up to current standards, but also bringing up the current practices and methodologies that are being utilized, whether it's in, in, in the engineering world with our Plans Review Manual, or whether it's in the Development Management process that has, you know, there's been, and or the zoning manual where there's been legislative changes that makes the, the policies completely irrelevant. Next slide. And so we have been working on this diligently for over a year. We started our research and comparative analysis back almost a year ago, this past August, actually, probably started a little before that, because I was taking notes as things as we were, as I was experiencing these inconsistencies and practices, we started documenting some of that information. So we started putting it, working internally through September and October, all the way into December, not what we were doing from PAI's perspective, but also then reaching out to all the different agencies and their subject matter experts as, as they dealt with stuff throughout the policies and what their codes and regulations included. So we were being consistent with all of that. And then in January, in earnest, we, we did our outreach effort with people who are familiar with our development review process, through our zoning regulations and things like that. We wanted people that knew about these policies, utilize these policies a lot, bring them in to see what we had done. We made a lot of changes based on what they recommended. We modified a lot of the things that we had, clarified some things. It was an excellent process in my mind, because it gave us lightened as to we see things through our eyes as one way, and they may see it through a different way, so therefore we took in that, that into consideration. Or if something wasn't clear, we made sure that we made it abundantly clear if they didn't understand what we were trying to do through any of the policy manuals. And of course, now we are here in front of you, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Nash to go over some of the, the more details of what's in the policy manuals. But I just wanted a, sort of a welcome and thank you. And this has been a concerted effort of three different manuals that we did, two of the manuals we combined into one, because there's a lot of redundancy, but in terms of Department of Public Works, but it's been a valiant effort to try and get this stuff up to today's standards and what we're working on, so it will make an easier and more efficient process through all the agencies across the county. So at that, I will turn it over to Sally.
Thank you. All right. So as Pete mentioned, and as I mentioned last time, we combined two of the manuals, the Development Plan Review Manual and the Development Management Policy Manual into one. So now we have the Development Management and Plan Review Policy Manual. And we took this combined manual to the work group. Mostly the changes in that iteration were a re, a big reorganization of the text. We created three sections that were broken down by topic area to help it flow better. We did a lot of clarification, worked very hard with Public Works to get rid of information that they had, have updated more recently than we have in their design manuals. We, we eliminated a lot of out of date material that way. We also added sections on PAI's review phases, three review phases for development review, which is Phase 1, which is our Development Plan Review, Phase 2, which includes grading, stormwater management, construction drawings, security agreements, things like that, and then Phase 3, which is the final inspections as built, security reduction, and closeout. So this is, makes up the bulk of the process for development review before you go to permits. We, at the work group, a lot of the changes were clarifying things that made sense to us, but not to the work group, some further rearranging and some, some new language. We want to make it clear that these are policy manuals, and that if there is a conflict between the policy manual and the code, the code's always going to override the policy manual. Additionally, anything that is made, any decision made administratively by PAI can be appealed to the ALJ or the appropriate authority. Next slide. So to get a little more granular, in terms of the biggest changes that were made, first of all, we, we've added a lot of processes that have existed informally in the department, but not, they weren't written down anywhere. So for example, the priority status for review request. This is when we have a project with a lot of pub, public benefit or a public project that Baltimore County is doing, they want to have an expedited review. We do that, we set out specific criteria that the development, the person representing the development has to show, and if, if they meet the criteria and the Director of PAI, EPS, dude, and planning agree, it can be expedited through our review process and especially through Soil Conservation District. So that we've added that, it's in the appendix. We've also added in-depth descriptions of the PAI review process and how we coordinate with other departments, especially Public Works, in terms of our review. We added more specific language about the DRC, the Development Review Committee, and limited exemptions. We tried to emphasize in there that the DRC is a body that deals with process, not on merits of the application. And so a project is going to the DRC to say, is this a project that can either A, go straight to permits? Is this a project that can go through an administrative review procedure? Or is this a project that has to go full process, which means they have to have a community input meeting and they have to go to the ALJ? And there are some set in stone criteria that determine which path the project will take, but there is also some subjective criteria, or at least not subjective, it depends on the agency who is at the table. So the Environmental Department has different criteria than PAI in terms of what they want to see go which path. So we tried to make that clear and give some examples of when, of something an agency might be looking for in terms of determining one path versus another path. We also made it clear that minor subdivisions do need to go to deep, to the DRC. There's, there, there's, they've had somewhat of an exception, sometimes they go straight to zoning, because it's obvious what a minor sub is, right? Three or fewer lots. But we've decided we just need to be consistent in our process, everyone needs to go to DRC first and then get farmed out to the correct process. We also strongly recommend recordation for minor subs, because this is not required, and we've had problems with people not being vested in, since they didn't record a plat for their minor subs. And we would, we would prefer that it, that is a requirement, but that, right now, we're just strongly recommending that. There was also a lot of checklists in the original manuals. We've got rid of all of those. They were, you know, things we could put online, and they are online, and that way, every time they need to be updated, we don't need to do a manual update. Didn't really make sense for them to be in there. And we have a few items that we worked on with staff and with the, the work group that would require legislation, that we can't really make the change through the policy alone. So there's one especially, which is that we would like all projects, including non-residential projects, to meet current code. Right now, the code says that non-residential projects can be approved in the manner and method that they were originally. So you might remember the CRG process, for example, which is a review group similar to, sort of similar to the DRC, but it's made up of different people and has a different process for project approval. So it doesn't really make sense for us to now be accepting non-residential projects that are being modified and trying to get, fit them through a process that no longer exists. So we, we are hoping for a code change that would make it so non-residential projects are like residential projects, which is that they have to meet current code the day they walk in the door with a change or a new project. We also added a lot of information about traffic impact study standards, Public Works, which is, this is actually their domain, but we wanted to put some standards in our manual. Well, they follow up with more specific regulations soon, they're working on it, but we wanted to make it clear what the criteria was when you needed to do a traffic study, how you should go about doing that traffic study. Finally, the deep, the Development Plan Review sections were, we worked after a close consultation. we worked after a close consultation with Public Works and the Environmental Department, as mentioned before. All right, next slide. Zoning Policy Manual, the big overview, very similar to Development Plans Review and Development Management. We did a lot of rearranging. We alphabetized things. We also added a lot more code section references to make it easier for people to go back and forth between the policy manual and the code. We added a cross-reference table at the end. So you can look up the policy by code and see what code number it applies to and vice versa. If you have a code section, you know, you can go and look and see which of the policies address that code section. There are updated graphics. There's also more court cases and the details about what the outcome of those court cases was. So you can tell what precedence the issue has. And often you can see how that policy came about because you can see the court case or the policy was in response to the court case. The work group did some further clarification. We did a lot of deleting things that didn't make sense, very out of date. We combined a lot of policies that the work group thought didn't really need to be separate policies. And they had to request out even more code references throughout the documents. So we did that for additional breadcrumbs. Next page. Some of the biggest changes we made in here are all in response to either newer legislation or newer technologies that have come up over the years, such as accessory in law apartments. That's an example of one where the code changed, we had to change our policy. Agriculture, commercial agricultural buildings. This is just a policy that we have a lot of confusion about because agricultural buildings have to meet certain code requirements like electrical and plumbing. And there are certain zoning criteria that agricultural buildings have to meet. But if it's a bona fide commercial farm, they don't need a building permit per se. So there's often, I think there's been years of confusion and hopefully this policy helps straighten it out a little bit. We also have had confusion about accessory structures and what exactly subordinate means. So in this policy, subordinate area, extent or purpose, we tried to make it very clear that accessory building has to be subordinate in every sense of that word. Okay, and next slide. So that is all I have. If you have any specific questions or you wanted to talk about a specific policy or section of the policy manual, we are here and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Any questions from the board? Mr. Perlow?
You mentioned minor subdivision flats. I'm not sure, doing this 45 years on the title side, why a minor subdivision flat has never been considered a legal record of the county.
By deed, if you do it by deed?
By deed, but I mean, I know the plat record used to be in the courthouse. They're not there anymore. You got to go to Hall of Records now. And it was very difficult to come up with one where another title company never recorded the deed, that recorded the plat along with the deed. I know how to do it, but an awful lot of companies don't, don't even know, you know, what's there. I guess I never understood why the county didn't just make it a legal plat record of the county. I don't know what it would take for legislation.
We agree.
You recorded a plat or you created a minor subdivision. And by code, if you recorded it, you're vested. Well, you never recorded, I can't vest you. So that's one of the, why we're recommending strongly because I've come across in the two years I've been, however long I've been at PII, when I come across the individual and I say, well, you know, you didn't record these lots, therefore you're not vested. So vested is actually construction coming out of the ground unless you record the lot. So I'm, you know, we're, that's where we are, but I had legislative changes and.
Is something that you would take to the council for, so I mean legislatively?
We have a to-do list, yes. It's on our, it's on one of our to-do lists.
It's been ridiculous for 45 years. I mean.
We're in agreement there.
Great to hear. And I've only heard, you know, from many people in the home building industry that they're very pleased with the updates. There's no question it was needed and you guys have done it very.
Right, thank you. I did also want to mention one thing about EV charging stations. We have a policy in there to respond to that technology. Of course, we did not realize we would soon be working with Steve on a report that you will be seeing next month, I believe, on EV charging stations. We, where we go into a lot of detail about the differences between the Level One, Two and Three chargers. And it is an option for you to make it so we could, we could update our policy manuals. So we specified the differences where One and Twos follow that policy, i.e. they're allowed as accessory uses everywhere. And then Three, we, we take a little bit more time to think about where those should go. So that, that is something I know came up in the public comments and something we've been talking a lot about as we've worked through our report.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Mr. Haver?
Hi, thank you for the overview. I know how thankless the job it is to try to update outdated manuals. I've done it a number of times myself, so thank you for your, your work on that stewardship. You're in a pretty unique position, having spent a year's time, you and your team, in looking at these manuals. And I was sitting here and it reminded me, were you here for the discussion of the design standards earlier at the other session?
No, I wasn't here yet.
So the board is, is considering looking at these Essex Middle River Civic Council, Greater Middle River Area Design Standards. And one of the questions that the board asked was, like, was there precedent for that? Or what was the enforcement mechanism? All I'm asking you is, in your review of all these various policy manuals dealing with development, did you, did you and your team ever come across anything having to do with these third-party design standards at all in these, in these policy manuals that I think you said haven't been reviewed, haven't been updated in 30 years? Is there anything in there about these design standards?
Is it, it's not third-party review, is that right?
Maybe, maybe what I'll do is just to speed things up is I'll send an email and just kind of get more at what I'm asking.
Okay.
Just because there's a statement made that these, these standards are going to be incorporated into the comprehensive manual development policies. And it sounds like that's what this is, right?
No.
Oh, okay. As, okay.
Yeah, their comprehensive manual design policies are dealing with the site design and/or the architectural features associated with it. Our design manual is dealing with the public infrastructure. So road, water and sewer utilities, that kind of stuff, sidewalks, that kind of stuff. We're dealing with the standards associated with that. When an access should be required, those kinds of things. They're dealing with an overall site design, we can speak to it better than I can, of, of whether context and character of the neighborhood and what's the appropriate type of design associated with that. So it's, they're not the same thing, two different things.
Any other questions? I'm hearing any? Okay, thank you. We're now going to call on those that have signed in to speak. There was a signing sheet located out in the lobby. Speakers will be called in the order that you registered. Ms. Bensley? And speakers, you will have two minutes to speak per manual. If you're speaking on one manual, you have two minutes. If you're speaking on two, both manuals, you have four minutes.
First up, we have Steve Smith.
Good evening. My name's Steve Smith. I'm with Gaylord Brooks Realty and have been developing in the county for the past 40 years. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Maryland Building Industry Association. And I'm a member of their life board and also the Baltimore County chapter. I sat on the External Review Committee. I found it fascinating. It was a collection of developers, engineers, attorneys, community activists, community group leaders. And there had to be hundreds of years of experience in the room. It was somewhat enlightening to go through it. It was also very painful because it was line by line. But I just, I felt like it was a very good process. I applaud Pete and Sally for putting it together and holding everybody to the table. It was a good process and I think that the end result is exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Renee Hamidi.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Renee Hamidi, representing Valley's Planning Council. I also was on the review committee. I also commend Director Gutwald and Deputy Director Nash. This was a huge undertaking and their attention to detail and their patience with all of us. It was really impressive. That said, I have a few, sorry. I have a few issues that I stumbled across and I didn't understand that you were going to be voting on this today. Or I would have certainly sent an email so that you could look at what I was talking about. Still, I'm going to talk about it because I'm here and I have the time. I'm going to start with the Development Policy Manual. I don't know if you have it. If you do, I will refer to page 12. There's a policy that talks about limited exemptions. And it says, it specifies two, the A1.6 and the B8 that require posting. And I wonder why that's all that requires posting. I hear from community members all the time who ground is being broken and they had no idea that this whole process had happened or that any exemptions were allowed or what is going up. And in the spirit of transparency that I think we're trying to achieve, I think community members are the first people that should know when something is going on. There's another issue on page 13, Policy Five. This one talks about development plans that are requesting waivers. There is no requirement here that the, there's any posting or notice of those waivers. Again, the community doesn't know unless it's posted. They don't all spend time online looking to see what's happening in their neighborhoods. And then finally, in this manual on page 16, Policy Nine, on Development Plan Notice and Certification. There's a provision in here that says that any individual or group, which was a party to or named in any limitation, shall be notified of any development plan conference or ALJ hearing which involves a development that's been the subject of prior hearings. Only.
Okay, is that, you have two minutes on each manual. That was on manual one, yep. You want, you have two minutes on the other manual.
Great, let me skip to the next one. Zoning Policy Manual. I will just address the one most important thing that bothered me the most about this. I mean, there were plenty of issues. I've been involved in a few cases. I'm involved in a few cases right now. And clearly, the language will change the outcome of those cases. It's designed specifically, I think, targets specifically some cases that I'm involved in. The most egregious issue is the one that has to do with spirit and intent letters. I was introduced to this concept. A spirit and intent letter is like a ticking time bomb. We don't know it's there. It's sitting in a file. And essentially, it's a developer saying, this is what I'm going to do. And the director puts it in his file. We don't know, nobody knows that it's in there. So that is policy, that's a new policy. And I want to give you the citation. Excuse me. On page 53, PP9, Spirit and Intent Request Letters. I think that needs to go. And since I have the time, I want to talk about one more thing. There is a provision in here that says that variances that are granted as part of a special exception, run with the land, fine. The special exception expires, the variances do not need to be reapplied for if the special exception is reapplied for, or if any other special exception is applied for. So somebody smart can apply for a special exception, variances that apply to that special exception, let that initial special exception expire and then they still have those great variances, which may have nothing whatsoever to do with the second special exception. I think that's very problematic. How much time do I have?
Seven seconds.
Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you so much for coming out.
That was everyone, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our speaker registration list. Thank you all for coming out again and speaking into the planning board. We take your comments very seriously and will take consideration. At this, let's see, if there's no further questions or comments from the board, this will conclude our public hearing. But we will immediately reconvene for a discussion and the vote on the matter that we just discussed. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Hey, thank you. All right, good evening again. The public meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board has now reconvened and called to order. Nancy Halford, the Chair of the Planning Board, and we'll now start again with a roll call with the members that are here. Mr. Array. Ms. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. German.
Here.
Mr. Haver.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Mr. Heinel.
Mr. Hinton.
Mr. Halepka.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. McGuinness.
Mr. Perlow.
Ms. Panero.
Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson. Here. Thank you. The board now has an opportunity to discuss then vote on the Department of Permits, Approvals and Inspection Policy Manual Updates. Mr. Gutwald and Mrs. Nash are here to answer any questions that the board might have before we go for a vote. I will now open the floor for discussion if there is any. Mr. Johnson.
The spirit and intent letter. Could you, could you explain and talk about that?
First of all, it's been done for decades and it's a practice that has been utilized. And I don't think people were aware that this was a practice that was utilized. So that is one of the reasons why I wanted to put it in the policy so everybody was aware that this is a practice. It's been, has been being conducted for decades. The spirit and, and I wanted to clarify because I think there's been, and I don't argue with some of her concerns because my concern was that it's been used for a number of different reasons. And I wanted to make that finite. So the spirit and intent is to say something has been granted to you via whatever process, you know, however it's been done, and this does not significantly change what you got approval for. That has been given a lot of flexibility over the years and I wanted to finite what that spirit and intent was to be used for and that there significantly, there was nothing that was being changed. If it was the geographic boundary that was being approved for the variance or if it was something that was being done that there, sometimes you get a variance. You moved, you got a, you got a variance for the rear yard setback for a deck or an accessory structure, right? And you find out that you had a something, a utility or something else. So you moved, you still enjoyed the variance, but you just moved it 10 feet the other direction because you couldn't put it in that location. So that's what the spirit intent is all about, is to say you are in the spirit of what was granted to you, but you didn't make, do it to the exact site plan that was approved originally because of whatever situation occurred. Accessory structure is a lot of things that we get or setbacks, variances or something that you get a lot of times. And they had to modify the actual site layout of that because of whatever they came across. I can't give you an example off the top of my head, but that's sort of what it, but the biggest point of putting it in the policy is I wanted to set the criteria and the parameters when that can be used because I've seen it used all over the, you know, it was, it was, it was very flexible in how they use the spirit and intent. And changing geographic boundaries was one of them that was, you know, disturbing to me to say that you, you were granted this variance in this area and then you went over here and did it. And the spirit and ten allowed you to move it over here even though it was the same use. No, you changed the geographic boundaries, you're going back, you know, kind of thing. So I, that's the purpose of the spirit and ten is saying you're doing something consistent with what you have approval for. It's just not in the exact, you know, footprint that you got approval for. So that's, that helps you explain it. But biggest thing is I put parameters around you can and cannot write a spirit and intent letter.
Previously, was it ever, anybody ever notified as to, so, okay. It wasn't that, okay. There wasn't that, okay.
There wasn't any notification, but it had been done as a practice, so, yeah.
Mr. Aray?
Thank you. I think you guys have done a great job, considering that there have been 20 years since any change, you know, we made, am I correct? 20 years?
30.
30?
Over 20.
So, how do you look at this? I hope that...
Great point.
30 years.
So by code, it's supposed to be every three years, believe it or not.
It was 30.
I brought that to the county executive's attention. Yes, technically, these things are supposed to be updated every three years.
30 just because of the, maybe oversight.
They're very difficult things to, I mean, the zoning, and Mitch is here, but he can, so he can speak to it, but the zoning policy manual, there was an attempt about 10, 15 years ago. It just got overwhelming because the changes are so rapidly. And then it was just, you know, well, we can't, you know, they just couldn't get it through the process, I guess. They would, they would recognize that there would be documentation of how to further deal with this policy that was outdated, but there wasn't actually formally done in a, in a comprehensive manner. So, yeah, technically, we're supposed to be looking at these things every three years. Not that you have to redo them every three years, but you're supposed to evaluate what needs changed every three years.
So, do you intend then to...
If I'm here in three years?
[Laughter]
Yes, that's, that's the idea.
If you do that, I don't think issues will file up.
Correct. Absolutely.
The changes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Aray. Mr. Hayfer, you have a question?
Yes. Who issues the spirit and intent letter?
It's my office.
Okay. Are they made available online?
Sure. I mean, well, not online, but if you request it, it's public information.
Right. I think, I think, you know, in the spirit of transparency, would there be any reason that they couldn't be posted online? I mean, it seems relatively simple and straightforward, and it would definitely give community associations better, better insight and easier accessibility.
So that's a whole bigger issue, I think, several of the community members brought to our attention. And I don't know, it's not necessarily policy, we just got to do a better effort on our whole website with CIMs, development plans, all of that information. We're working at trying to make that more accessible so people don't have to come to Towson and pull that information. Zoning, ZAC hearings, zoning comments, development plan comments, those are things we're working at. It's not in the policy manual, but those are definitely things we heard from the community members, particularly on this, on this work for, work committee, to address those issues of making it more accessible, I guess is really the words, and easily to be found because it's, it's a navigational nightmare sometimes. And hey, I'm the director of permits, approvals, and inspections, and I've had this argument with OIT. I have a hard time finding it, what do you think the outside? Has a hard time, so, and I totally get that. We're working on it, trying to revamp our websites and get information in electronic format.
And some of the other issues that were raised in general have to do with notification, posting requirements and things like that. Is that something else that could be addressed with, with greater transparency of things being available online, or is this something else? Like, I don't know all the, you know, these limited exceptions and A16 and B8, all that.
So, yeah, there are specific, there was legislative changes for, and one of the issues is minor developments and commercial developments. Minor commercial developments are what I would, that's not actually in the code, but that's what the concern is a lot about when somebody comes through that process. So the A18s and the B8s, is that what I have that correct, require public notification, so the property is posted. The other types of exemptions are things that aren't really, physically, you physically wouldn't even notice if you were out in the woods. So those, lot line adjustments, those kinds of things that if you posted it, I don't even know what I would tell you, because they're just, they're just kind of moving properties over, or they're, they're going through a, they're going through an estate process that they have to document and re-establish the lot lines or whatever the case may be. So a lot of the other exemptions are not development-oriented, is the way I would put it. So I, you know, when, when we were talking about public notification, it's more or less those, those types of developments that need public. So minor subdivisions have to be posted, that was already, they have to be notified and those properties are posted, as is, you know, if you're now, if you're doing any kind of modifications to commercial development, or, you know, coming through what is called the B8, which is a commercial minor development, have to be posted today, so. We could look at that as the other exemptions, but most of the exemptions, when I look in my mind, I'm thinking about them, and I have them all memorized, it's more administrative exemptions. It's paperwork, it's documenting, it's, it's recording the information with the county.
Thank you, Mr. Gutwold. Is that okay? Any other questions or comments before we go for a vote?
I hear you. Okay, thanks. So a quick question. When Ms. Nash was presenting on one of the PowerPoint slides, it mentioned that all projects, residential and non-residential, now need to meet current code. Is that for only new developments, or is that for redevelopments as well? Because I know, you know, we just kind of went through the master plan process, and there's a big focus on, you know, redeveloping some aging commercial and residential projects. So I'm, I'm trying to understand if they're meant to meet current code at the time of the initial application, or at the time when final approvals take place, because we all know that there's a huge lag in that. So just trying to understand exactly how that is different from the current development and plans review policy.
So I believe when she meant current code, we're talking about process, correct? Yeah, so it's the process. So it's typically an amendment or a modification to an existing plan when they come back through. And currently, the, the code says that you go back to the way it was approved originally. Well, those, those processes don't exist anymore. They haven't been using those processes. There was the JSCPs and there's the CRGs, and these were processes that where the county and/or the planning board and/or the ALJ, or the zone, what they called the zoning commissioner back then, would have, have approved it. Well, there is no zoning commissioner, it's the ALJ anymore. The planning board doesn't have any responsibilities with, of reviewing modifications to amendments or, you know, to plans. So they, and that's got circumvented through the CRG process, which is in code, so that's the county review group, right? Well, some of these things, you can't just go through a county review group, it's got to get, there's got to be public notification. So we don't even follow those processes anymore by practice, even though that's what the policy manual was referencing. So that's what I'm getting at, where when she, when, when we had up there that, that we're going to make them go through the current county code, we're going to go through the current process that's required for any development, whether you were approved through the CRG or some other process before, whatever the county code says right now that you go through, you, you need to go through that process today. As, as it relates to like zoning regulations, I've always said that, you know, even if you are vested, you, and your property got rezoned, you still have to meet that, the current, what your zoning, if you didn't come out of the ground with something, you have to meet the current zoning standards associated with that, whatever, even if your property got rezoned. So does that help you explain?
It does, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, maybe I entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the planning board is accepting of the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections Policy Manual Updates on the Development Management and Plan Review Policy Manual and the Zoning Policy Manual, and forwards them onto county council for further review and adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take a vote. Mr. Aray?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Halepka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Perlow?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Warren Left?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. This is the conclusion of our last agenda.
Ms. Nash, I have a question.
Okay.
So I think this is a really good opportunity, and I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, that we, in the, in the communication or the transmittal of this approved policy to the council, that we strongly recommend that as much be made available from these processes electronically as, as practicable, something like that. This is a great opportunity, I think, to really help spotlight another area that's in need of some work in terms of transparency and, and electronic records. And just in the transmittal email, or however, I'm not even sure how you, how this is all transmitted to the council, but could we, is it possible just to put a sentence in there that says, "We strongly recommend that some, that as much be made available publicly through electronic means as possible," or something, something like that?
Would that be, Mr. Lafferty, would that be an addendum, or that would just be a comment?
Does the approval go directly from the planning board to the council? Okay. So it's a recommendation to the council?
And we, we can certainly, I think, highlight the fact that work is ongoing to update it and looking for council support to ensure that such materials are added to the website. But the, the county is undertaking, attempting to undertake and sort of overhaul of the website now. It is, as I think was said earlier by Steve Smith in different contexts, very tedious because it is clearly outdated and pretty convoluted. I think we can also reinforce with our Office of Information Technology to continue working with Mr. Gutwold and his office to expedite that.
That would be great. I think oftentimes, when efforts like that are undertaken, people think it's because somebody had a good idea, right? Here are real-world examples of how important it is that this type of information be made available electronically. And so, you know, it's something else that, that the people who are advocating for this within, within the government, within the county government, could point to and say, this, this is another example that reinforces why we're doing this and the importance of it.
We, we can emphasize that in our transmittal to the council.
I don't think we have to call for a vote.
No, I didn't, I didn't think so, but I wasn't sure how it all worked.
Okay, is there any other comments? But that was, thank you, Mr. Hayfer, I appreciate that. If not, that's a conclusion. Remember, we have a meeting on Thursday, September 21st. Do I have a motion to finally adjourn? On second? All in favor? Thank you.
[Inaudible] Get the information, did you give that to you yet?
Okay, yeah.